Thanks, Mike. Good evening, one and all. It's about 6 o'clock. It's November 13th, Monday. We're at the Bennington Fire Facility. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectors for the town of Bennington. By the way, Brooke and Riley, it's almost time for your bed. So if you're watching, get ready to go to bed. My grandkids are in town. Anyway, I'm Tom Jacobs and I'd like to introduce the rest of the board. Go ahead, Chad.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, I'm Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Carson Therbure.
And Jean Conner.
And I'm Stuart Hurd, the manager.
And Nancy Lively. Nancy Lively, just sitting at the bar end. Yes. Thanks very much for your efforts. It's been great. We will pledge allegiance, make our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Jim, would you lead us?
Sure. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. We have a circulated agenda. Folks have been able to review it, I hope and expect. I'll entertain at least a motion for admission of the consent agenda. So moved? Motion. We have a motion seconded. Any discussion on the minutes, the warrants? And we'll talk about a proclamation in a second.
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, great. We have all in favor, signified by aye. That's six in favor and one abstention. As is the responsibility of the vice chair. We have a proclamation. If you would operate for our consideration, Tom.
I am going to read a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November 25th, 2017. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are millions of small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all the businesses and are responsible for 63% of the net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas on average 33% of consumer holiday shopping will be done at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants, and whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently owned restaurants and bars is important, and whereas Bennington, Vermont supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the town of Bennington, Vermont hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and the communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Dated Bennington, Vermont, this 13th day of November, 2017.
Thank you. I would accept the motion to accept the proclamation as read.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of the proclamation as read? Aye. Seven in favor and no abstentions. So take that, Amazon. We will sign it and spread the good word.
Just curious, who writes these, Stuart?
Generally, the format is provided by the organization that supports it. We shorten it to fit a page and get signatures on it.
Just curious.
Thank you. We also have an opportunity for citizens' comments.
Actually, we have a liquor license that's on the consent agenda.
Are you going to do that up front? Okay, I see it there, but it wasn't.
Yeah. It's really, in a sense, it's not new. As you may know, Walgreens has now purchased the Rite Aid franchise, and so they need to change their license to Walgreens. And I can circulate that for signature.
Please. Is a motion required?
No, motion's not required.
We will sign it if we are satisfied with its content. Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on matters that are not before the board, and if you've signed in, that'd be great. Mr. Martinez, do I see you, if you're on the list here? Go ahead, Jane. Welcome. Welcome to the Select Board, welcome to Bennington. That's okay.
I just came by to introduce myself. My name is Jim Martinez. I'm president of the Tri-State Area Federal Credit Union. We are a small, $24 million not-for-profit, and we're coming to Bennington. We've been in Husick Falls since 1953. We expect to break ground on Washington Avenue, right next door to the Elks. And we had some testing done today on the soil, and we hope to break ground, we expect to break ground soon. And we expect to be in the building in June, so they tell me.
Good luck.
We're excited. We're different than anything you've ever seen, and we can't wait to get started.
Great. We look forward to having you join the community, and it's interesting that you've picked the downtown area to add to your activity. Is there any particular reason that you decided to locate where you did, Jim or Jane?
You mean, other than the Putnam redevelopment?
Yeah.
Yes. I like to be out, well, I do. I won't be running it, we'll have a manager running it, but like to be involved in the community, like to be downtown, out and around, see people and be seen, let people know what we do and who we are.
Great. That's great.
There was no question where we wanted to be.
I just want to say a few things. Thank you so much. And you know that your remarks about being involved or being a part of the redevelopment of the Putnam block is so important, and this really adds mortar to the idea that the Putnam block is going to happen, because you've expressed faith, not just in building a place, but you put your money where your mouth is and for the downtown of Bennington. And I just want to express my gratitude for the people of Bennington that you've done so.
Thank you. Thank you. It's exciting.
It is.
What's happening in Bennington is exciting. We can't wait.
Looked like you were breaking ground today out there. There was something big in yellow digging.
That's correct, yeah. They were doing borings to test the soil to make sure we could put the size building that we're putting up. It'd be all over 3,000 square feet, so.
Great. We're looking forward to a ribbon cutting, which is special. And anytime we can cut a ribbon, welcome a new business, it's special for the entire community. And thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any guests?
Go ahead. No, I'm sure.
Are you going to be hiring people or bringing people over from Husick Falls?
We'll be hiring people.
Great.
Preferably local.
Great.
I want somebody who knows the market.
We like that.
Yeah.
What's the cost of the project?
Well, we aren't exactly sure yet. The purchase was $200,000 for the land, and we suspect it'll be anywhere from a million to 1.2 million.
How many stories?
It'll, well...
Two stories.
Two stories, minimum.
In total, you get voted?
But the second story, it'll be two stories, but we will use the top story just for storage.
Great.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hope to see you again.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Joey Colkin? Good evening, Joey.
Hello. How are you?
Good, thanks.
So the town got their lead and copper results recently, and by and large, they're pretty decent. But I'm kind of curious about the process, and I was wondering if maybe anyone on the board could educate me about who chooses the 30 sampling sites, and if there's any way that the public could go through the list and see what time all the samples were taken, because there's very strict requirements for the lead and copper test.
Sure. Yeah, no, I think it's, you know, interesting. I would have to turn to the engineer, and what's the process and educate us all.
Well, Joey sent me an email asking similar questions this morning. I have forwarded portions of the email to the engineers to understand where we are with regard to the grant that we're operating under. And unfortunately, my public works folks were not available to me to explain how the sites were chosen. I don't choose them. They're chosen by staff. We generally look to the area of the village where water may be low flow and where lead service lines might be prevalent. So yes, there is a concentration within the village, and that's probably why. I don't have a description of why every location was chosen, but I hope to have that.
I just noticed a few things, like, you know, Sunrise is a really important resource, and they've never been tested in that area. And Molly Stark, there was no testing near there. And Monument Elementary, no testing near there. I was just thinking, you know, certain places you would want to test, you know, every couple of years, but also just to find the information on what times each test was taken, and if all 30 of those faucets had been dormant for six hours, just little things that really answer a lot of questions.
I can tell you, I can answer portions of that. When people are asked to sample in their homes for this, for lead, they are asked to sample first thing in the morning, so that you understand that the water hasn't been used. It is the first, you're not supposed to run your faucet, it's the first sample you take. You fill the vial that you're given to the level that's shown, and you bring it to the water department through the town offices for testing. So yes. And as to Molly Stark and Monument, my guess is that those are not areas where lead lines were prevalent. They're probably newer, water lines cast iron, little likelihood that lead service lines exist. And I think that because we're looking into people's homes to see whether or not the lead service lines are being protected from leaching because of the way we treat our water system, I'm assuming that's why most of those, it's a very tight area where those sites were selected. And unfortunately, I don't have the answers to why each site was selected there, but we're concentrating in the former village where lead line, lead service lines were prevalent back in the day.
When did the lead service lines stop being installed, you know?
Lead service lines continue. Many homes still have them, or portions of them are lead, or there are lead joints in some of the copper lines. We treat the system, the system has no lead water mains. Water mains were never made of lead. They generally tend to be ductile iron, and now they're up into PVC.
But they're no longer being installed?
No, no one's installing lead water lines at this time. But we treat, and we have been treating the system since 1978 or '79 for lead. We were one of the first, Fitchburg, Mass. and Bennington, Vermont were the first to construct water filtration systems which actually address lead in the water. And Fitchburg actually was the model that we used, and it's been in use for all of these years, and has proven very, very successful in coating the pipes and reducing the leaching of lead and copper. But we are required under EPA and state law to test for those two components on a regular basis.
Could you just make that same information that's available to Joey, available to the board, an email?
Be glad to. Be glad to.
No, getting into a discussion.
No, I'm not, no discussion, I just have a question. And it's more to Joey's point, and that is to, it's probably too granular, but do you know if any sites that are in proximity to Monument or Sunrise have been tested? And do you have any knowledge to that?
Well, I'm sure there are sites close to Sunrise. As I said, I think they tend to be sites where we're looking for low flow. And Joey's...
Well, Union Street has never been tested, according to the records that...
Well, Union Street would not be a low-flow area. It tends to be a high-flow area. It's a loop system through Union Street, it's heavily populated. So my own, that's my guess, is that that's why that was not selected. Are there areas where there are dead-end lines, or areas that are less developed that are off of that Union Street line? Probably. But I don't have that information for you folks tonight.
And really quickly, and then I'll step away, just piggybacking off Mr. Martinez.
Martinez?
Martinez. If any of you know why the Putnam project has been delayed for four, five, six months? You know, they were supposed to really get started in November, December, construction, but it's put off at least until March and probably later. I was wondering if any of you have heard what happened?
No, I think because it's a private undertaking, we'd like to, hope, as you do, that it's, the shovel will be in the ground next week, but it's really going to be at their call. This is a major project, and I'm sure they have challenges to get through that process, like we all would. We know how much it takes just to get a small project going, much less one this magnitude.
Is this something the town would be interested in knowing, though? I mean, we're, the town is backing the project so heavily, it's, you know...
And we're still heavily backing them, and if they need some help and they come to us, I'm sure we'll listen to them.
From what I understand, all financing fell through construction, so they don't really have any of the $20 million that they need. I just thought, maybe you guys had heard it?
No. That's hyperbole, and it's not something we could even know, much less comment on.
Oh, it's factual. I just thought you guys might know.
Based on whose information?
Okay, let's not get into it. This is a private project, Jim, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much, no?
We shouldn't spend or send deleterious rumors out on something that we placed a lot of hope in.
Okay.
As I said, I have factual documentation, so Mr. Chair asked and I answered.
If you guys want to take it offline and talk about it, fine, but we're not going to waste any more of our time tonight. Thank you.
It's just interesting that when something positive happens with it, you always do talk about it.
And we will.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hi there.
I'm here as a representative of the Bennington Oral Health Coalition. And we, the coalition sent the Select Board a letter last week, and I hoped that it would be promulgated to the entire Select Board. Did that all happen?
Yeah, we all, and the recipient of that letter, yeah.
So for the public record, I wanted to read this letter. Would that be permissible?
It's really not something that we would want to do during public comment at this particular point in time. It's part of the record available through the town office, if someone would like to, but we're not going to have that read into the record tonight.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I couldn't...
It's not part of the agenda, and we're not going to allow a letter to be read into the record, because it basically is asking for certain things, and if Stuart, our town manager, wants to circulate the letter to the public, it's certainly available.
Okay, so does the Select Board have a response to that letter?
Not at this point.
And can you anticipate when the Select Board might have such a response?
I would suggest sometime, and I would only glean sometime after April 1st. Would that be fair? I haven't talked to the board, but...
Have you discussed the letter?
No, we haven't discussed it. That's the thing, we would have to.
So did you say April 1st?
Yes.
And why did you choose that?
There'll be a new Select Board seated at that point.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the community? Anyone else? Hearing none, we would like to have an update from the YMCA. We're not going to have any music on that. Hi, Randy. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Select Board, giving me the opportunity to update our summer program at the YMCA. We started a summer camp, Camp Green Mountain, this year at the rec center, and just want to give some details what happened, some learning experiences, and then talk about a little bit more opportunities we have in this great town. We had 91 total kids enrolled in the camp this year. We averaged about 40 per day. So we hired four full-time staff members, four full-time staff members from the Bennington community for our summer camp. We realized that there was a need for aftercare and beforecare, so we had 17 kids that needed aftercare and 21 kids that needed beforecare. And what that means is that parents have to get to work and get out of work at a certain time, so we accommodated those needs. Favorite activities this year for the kids were swimming and arts and crafts. Obviously, the rec center has a wonderful pool there, and the kids were able to utilize that this summer. We also took a field trip every Wednesday, and we went up to Willow Park and used that great setup there. Kids really had a good experience. What we learned and what we're going to improve on for 2018 is have a better transportation plan. We realized that some of the roadblocks for this summer camp was transportation, and we're going to work on that during the course here and be prepared for next year. We're going to work with the local school lunch program, too, to provide kids with lunches, so there's no roadblocks for parents feeding their children as well. And better communication, you know, this was, we kind of went at this really quick and really fast, and we're going to set up a better communication plan for parents, so they have access to our financial assistance program and have a better knowledge of what the camp actually does for kids. And then just improve our activities. Now that we've been at the rec center, we realize, you know, the assets of the rec center, the limitations of the rec center, and we'll be able to adjust that accordingly and have a better experience. This, I had mentioned the financial assistance program. We gave over $3,200 in financial assistance this year in our summer camp for people in Bennington, and the Berkshire Family YMCA didn't raise a dollar in Bennington this past year. So that really came out of our organization's fundraising efforts in Berkshire County, and we had no problem doing that. We thought it was well-intended and well-deserved, so. Couple updates. We're looking at the Monument After School Program. We've made the connections, we're ready to go, except we can't hire anybody. And we're saying we can't hire anyone because no one is applying for this particular job. So in this particular program, we have beforecare and aftercare for kids that are in school age, so kindergarten through fifth grade. And we've already did a needs assessment in the school. We have over 20 families that are interested. We also have, working with the state in providing vouchers for kids as well, but we're just not getting anybody applying for the job. So any help out there? I think this would be a great forum to talk about that.
What kind of qualifications are you looking for?
Well, usually it's if they have any experience working with kids at any point in their life, whether it's, you know, a summer camp, a youth sports coach, or whatever.
How many hours a week?
So it's roughly about, if the individual can do before and after, it's about 20 hours to 25 hours a week.
And can I be so bold as to ask for what the pay would be?
Sure. We pay anywhere between minimum wage and $1,150 an hour, so.
Well, I think the people around this table could make some phone calls, and we could probably find some...
Yeah, we really want to see this happen, because this is a good step, and it also is, it's a catalyst for the summer program, because those instructors in the before and after school program are building those relationships with kids and families, and help build our summer camp.
Can you leave your phone number with us tonight?
Sure.
Because I'll get on the horn tomorrow.
Awesome. That'd be great. Outstanding. And then the other thing, we've been coming up and looking at the Farmhouse Preschool. That is no longer being used as a preschool, so we're looking at that as an opportunity as well to grow some childcare programs. We're actually having a open house on November 28th from 9:00 to 11:00 up at the Farmhouse, 1:00 to 3:00, and 6:00 to 7:00. And so if that all goes well, and we see a need for that, we're going to take the leap of faith and open up a preschool at the Farmhouse. And that's for toddlers and preschools, children as well.
Where is the Farmhouse? I hate to say my ignorance. Where is it?
It's right in front of the Monument.
Oh, that one? Oh, okay. Okay, I didn't realize that was what it was called.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
And Randy, do you have staffing for that?
Again, we would have to hire people. Those are full-time jobs, though, so I think we wouldn't have a problem filling those seats. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to...
Yeah, I think we probably have a number of them. The pre, before, and aftercare programs?
Yep.
Is that ready to step off as soon as you are...
As soon as we get the staff, you know, we have, we have parents that are waiting for this program to start, so.
How many staff do you need, again?
So we roughly need two in the morning and two in the afternoon. Yeah. So four total.
How about it?
Why just Monument Elementary? Why not the other two elementary schools?
We sat with all the principals this past summer, sorry, before the summer started, and Monument was the one that was really interested in it. And I think Ben Al is another one that was interested, but they weren't ready to move forward with that yet, so. And Molly Stark already does some after-school programs, so they weren't, but we really wanted, once we get it started, one at a time, I guess, is the idea.
Hi. So Randy, can you talk, so you had 91 kids and about 40 per day. Does that feel like max for the program, or what would you, that's, I mean, that's an increase from what we've seen in the last couple of years, so that's great.
Yeah.
What would you like to see in terms of summer enrollment?
Well, as you know, my goal was 50 for this year, so I would like to get at that number. You know, if we go any higher than 50, then we're going to have to have a different accommodation for the kids, or like put a tent up at the rec center or something, just in case we have that inclement weather, we need to have a safe place for the kids to be, so they're not getting rained on or...
And that's 50 per day?
Yes.
So I think it's safe to say that most kids signed up for multiple weeks?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Did you find you had to, so you weren't turning anyone away?
No, we didn't, we didn't have to turn anyone away this time around, so.
Okay. Great. Pass on.
You'd mentioned some of the limitations you came across at the rec center. We can't fix everything, but what were some of the things that were most limiting to the programs that we might be able to get at in time?
Some space is the key. When you're at the rec center, the pool is a great location, the outdoors are perfect. It's just when you have that inclement weather, where do the kids go? There's those few rooms that are in the basement at the rec center, and, you know, if you put, you know, 25 and 25, you're really making it really tight down there, so that's probably the limitations.
Mostly indoor space?
Yeah, indoor space, yeah. Outdoor space, I mean, you could have 500 kids there, that's such a great space, so.
Great. I knew, I know last year was difficult with all the work going on in the elementary schools. Maybe have a little more flexibility next summer for using those spaces?
Well, yeah, we'll be more prepared next summer. And again, this was our first time. What's difficult for us is that, you know, in all our other programs, like in Pittsfield and North Adams, those are our buildings. We say, you know, we could do this, we can do that, we could store stuff, and it was just a little, it was a learning curve for a spot that we've never had full access to.
It's not really fair, but how would you rate, from 1 to 10, the experience that the Y sponsor had in Bennington? And the same way with the students or the children that participated and families?
Like, on a scale of 1 to 10?
Yeah.
Being really awesome and one being terrible?
Like, one, you're not coming back.
No, we want to come back.
No, okay.
So that would be a 10. We're really confident that we can expand and grow and make it better, so. We definitely, if we're invited back, we will come back.
And what about the reception you got from the community?
I think for, I mean, we had some ups and downs in the beginning because of some of the things that we learned from communications and stuff like that, so we've, I think we've learned from that, and I think that for the most part, many of the families had a good experience. You know, I'm not going to sit here and say it was a perfect experience, because we did have some people that were happy with the program, or, you know, had made some phone calls saying they didn't like certain things, but again...
Well, we invited you in kind of late.
Yep.
And we apologize for that, but with that lateness came opportunity...
That's right.
...to improve for next year, too. So what about Stark Street and that area, Stu? Is that something that eventually, I know, we own that, is that something that eventually we'll be able to use for programs again?
It's entirely possible. I know that there is a group recreational, or, you know, folks that are looking at Stark Street to try to revitalize it with some additional activities there, perhaps reopening the building that's there. We're also looking at plans to perhaps put an addition on the rec center, which would give them some interior space right at that location, and that, in a sense, that's ideal And in a sense, that's ideal because it is kind of centrally located and has access to the pool, which Stark Street would not. So I can tell you probably over the next several months, you're going to be hearing a number of different ideas coming out of folks working with our community development director to improve recreational opportunities for kids in this community.
And that'll include Randy and the Y?
Of course.
Respect. Go ahead.
Carson?
Thank you again for bringing your programs here.
Well, thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, I agree. Thank you very much. And I don't think anyone expected perfection the first year, so thanks for sticking with us and it'll just get better. I do have one question though. When you were assessing the successes and the not-so-successful pieces of the program, did you get that information from the parents and the kids or did you just glean that from the staff and what you observed?
I worked with this wonderful lady named Zerwa. She provided this, we gave her all the information for our parents and she sent out a survey and she sent back the survey. I'm not sure what the response rate was on it, but there was a lot of good feedback, so.
Great.
Anything else from the board? Again, thanks Randy, and we're here as you are and we appreciate the investment that you've already made and look forward to getting this program up on. Because I think that that's a real part of what we were talking about, that before and after school programs are going to be critical in making this a success.
All right, if there's anything else, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Don't forget to leave your number.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where, in Bennington or in Pittsfield?
I think the question is because the catamount audience cannot understand the question is who does the hiring for the individuals that lead the program, I guess?
Well, it's the Y. I mean, and I have staff underneath me that hire that and work with those other staff members.
Do you mean for Y programming or do you mean in general at the rec center?
The Y.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because there were none of me and nobody to do our class. And so there was a little lifeguard.
Hmm, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's the Y. Yeah, that wouldn't be us. So the pool lifeguard was, we just, we provided staff for the summer camp and one of our staff members was also a certified lifeguard, so when our kids went in the pool, they teamed up with whoever the rec center hired as a lifeguard. And, you know, then we had the kids use the pool, but we weren't in charge of the lifeguards at the pool this summer. It would be the rec center.
The town.
The town of Bennington hires lifeguards and other folks to keep the recreation center open. Tracy Knights is the director and she is in charge of hiring most of those seasonal and part-time staff.
Randy, I think the Y's done as much as you can with the assets that we provided you and what you could give us in the short term.
Jenny, can you just pass you my number?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you very much.
We have the engineers from Aldrich and Elliott, Stu. Would you give us a background?
Sure. This is Jason Booth. He's from Aldrich and Elliott.
Good evening.
He's here this evening to help us through two particular projects. One that I presented rather badly to you a meeting ago, and two, the loan application for the second portion. I provided you with a total project cost summary and bond amount sheet at the beginning. In the first instance, the RBC replacement is the engineering agreements which we struggled with at our last meeting. And frankly, I sent out a memorandum explaining to you all that I was not entirely prepared for the questions I got. And had I done my deep research, which turned this up, this was a slide that you folks all saw in the original presentation on the bond at two various hearings. The step two, which is final design and permitting at 50,000, actually was attempted to contract at 39.6, I believe it is. And the step three, construction phase services, which are two different steps in the state grant process, they are seeking 104,600, something along those lines. So those costs were anticipated originally. They are part of the bond that was approved, so it wasn't additional costs on top of what we'd already voted and what we should have anticipated. The only issue that confused me was the, there is an amount in the construction phase services for oversight. And that is, if you refer to my memorandum which I sent out to you, resident project services are a not-to-exceed figure of $51,700. That includes about 512 man-hours to review and oversee progress at the facility with the RBC installations from April to December of 2018. That entire amount may not be spent, so that's why it said not to exceed, because the other portions of the project, which is the second half, the state has broken this into two project lines. One is the upgrade of the facility, the other is the RBCs. The RBCs is the project that we must complete by December of 2018 to be in compliance with our assurance of discontinuance. The upgrades can take longer and most likely will. They're the remainder of the projects that you've all heard about that are not RBC-related. Some of those engineering services will most likely go towards the other project as well when the engineer is on site. He'll make sure we're moving on the RBCs. He'll also make sure that the other projects are going forward. But the fact of the matter is the RBCs will start first. That'll be the first kickoff. So that's why I got confused about additional oversight services. They really are there, they were planned to be there, but there is all likelihood that they'll be shared services and they'll come out of each portion of the project. It's a project that's going to run parallel once the other things get bid.
Because I think, Stu, that was one, I think that, I think you had mentioned on that, Carson, that was, they're there, why can't they do both? Certainly makes degree of sense for economy and otherwise.
I do apologize for taking us down a path that got really confusing at the last.
I guess what was confusing to me was we haven't signed the agreement, you know, but we were looking at an amendment that, you know.
And that's because they're two different steps. The agreement was for step two, final design and permitting at 39.6. The second, the amendment, was step three, construction phase services at 104.6, I think it was. And the reason they're broken out that way, it really falls to the normal process. Our engineers were at risk when they started the engineering work. And the state of Vermont told them so because we had not yet passed the bond. But because of the deadlines in that assurance of discontinuance, Aldrich and Elliott felt it was necessary to get the engineering going, which would have been the final design and permitting. That was underway and what comes next is the construction phase. So normally you would have seen the first contract, step two, and that would have been followed by an amendment, step three. They came at you together because we've really passed step two and we were ready to move on to step three. So it really, I don't blame anyone for being confused. It was, in a sense, from my perspective, a little bit overwhelming, but we, in a sense, were way out in front with our engineering services. We hadn't signed all of the agreements necessary to perform those services. Had the bond not passed, Aldrich and Elliott would have been at risk for no payment. So that's, normally those are handled that way. And as the second question tonight, you'll be asked to sign another loan application and the agreements will follow. The engineering agreements will follow.
Sure.
Probably at the next meeting or some meeting beyond that. So that's what happened. We got out front because of the assurance, we felt we needed to be there. And unfortunately.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, but it got confusing and we knew that there was additional resident engineering services being provided in this contract that we didn't think we necessarily needed, but because of the overlap, some will come from this project and some will come from the other. But they'll be there as necessary.
Is it as necessary, meaning not to exceed?
In this particular contract, it's not to exceed. I'm not sure what the other one will look like, Jason.
Yeah, so are you referring to the design?
The upgrade, the upgrade.
Right, design, right. So the resident engineering services are always a not-to-exceed line item in the project cost. Reason being is that during construction, a contractor may not use all of the allotted time to do the work, so that's to your benefit.
Right.
So if it's not, if the time for the resident engineer is not used, it's not billed. Just to clarify a little bit and follow along the lines of what Stu was referring to, with the resident engineering services, the 105,000, which includes the 51,000 in RPR services for the RBCs. The state asked us to put in RPR services, resident project representative services from April to December. In the event that something happens with the other upgrade, where they, if the schedule got delayed for getting it out to bid or starting the project, there was still funding there for you all to be able to have representation on site. The goal of the project is for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade is to be out to bid sometime in probably the June or July timeframe. We would expect a contractor to be on board probably in the August timeframe of 2018, so there will be some overlap that Stu's referring to, which will, we likely will not use all of those RPR services.
Okay. That's helpful.
Big difference.
Yeah, it's a real clarification and I guess the other thing is, thanks for taking it on the chin before we had a bond vote. You're really down here to just say thanks.
Yeah, well, you know, it's an important project for the town of Bennington. You're an important client of ours and we understand the risks that are associated with the project on your end. If you don't hit the schedule, so working it backwards, I honestly don't think there was really much of a choice other than to try to push things forward.
Sure, because we were under that assurance of discontinuance and we had no flexibility really that was happening.
So I break down my request tonight into two parts. One is to authorize the manager to sign the contract and the amendment. And then the second would be to sign the loan application for the wastewater treatment upgrade, which is shown in orange. It is, it was estimated at the time at 262.5. This first loan application would cause for $266,000. So they're right in the ballpark where they thought they might be.
So is this amendment, at the last meeting, we did a motion to accept engineering amendment and authorize the town manager to sign? That's a different amendment?
I don't think you did authorize.
We didn't, no.
So I think if, just to clarify, I think at the last meeting, you were signing the construction loan applications for the RBCs.
We did the loan application. We did pass that one, okay.
Right.
Okay. But it's the same amendment, except now we understand.
It's the same documents that were supplied to you. You did not approve them at that time. You wanted me to go back and either beat the engineers up to get the price down or come back and explain to you why it was like it was.
Yeah, it seemed like it was an additional cost, but it looks now like it was built in the whole time.
That's correct.
Could I have a motion for purposes of discussion on the engineering agreement for the RBCs? Motion please.
Some move.
I got a first and a second discussion to follow. Anything you would like to add to what's been presented? I think it's pretty clear now in the explanation. Certainly, in my own mind, it is, it's not an additional kicker.
No, it's not an additional.
I guess, well, we have the engineer here. Am I asking?
Please do.
A parallel question. So I am interested in, this is a big ticket price and I think it's nice when we have not-to-exceed numbers, but I guess I am interested in, are there numbers in here that we should be tracking along the way to make sure they don't exceed estimates or exceed the numbers that we've been looking at?
Are you referring to engineering costs or all numbers in general?
Well, I guess you can speak most directly to engineering costs, but I would also be interested in your professional opinion on which numbers we should be tracking most closely here as we go through the winter and spring.
Sure. I think the biggest piece is obviously at this point in the project, if we talk about, let's start with the RBC replacement project, because that's going to be the biggest piece under construction, that's going to be the most cost outlay at this point in time. And so we've, the town has received bids, prices from two vendors. It's been awarded to the lowest cost spent, the lowest bidder at this point. Those costs are essentially, I would say, fixed, with the exception of whether there are additions that the town chooses to select for those RBC upgrades. So the costs to really watch and make sure are the, some of the other, the administration fees, we don't see those, you know, the towns, those come into the town, so from our perspective, we don't see those. We will manage the engineering costs. You'll see all the engineering costs as well. We bill on a monthly basis and you can monitor those as you see fit. And as far as the construction costs are concerned, those come in on a monthly basis for our pay requests. Actually, maybe a little bit different with the RBCs because there's, there will be an upfront payment for the equipment and then payments based on milestones as we go through the delivery of RBCs. So as far as monitoring costs, you really should be looking at all of it. The wild card, I shouldn't say wild card, but the real changes in project costs typically come once you get to the larger scale construction projects. So when we get to the wastewater treatment facility upgrade and you have a contractor on board, that's where we really want to focus on monitoring those costs that are going because those are more fluid numbers once you get a contractor on board and you're working through the contract and construction with the contractor.
And if I can follow up on that, with the RBCs in particular, the original bid, which was substantially lower than the estimate, included an add-on for a particular type of drive unit. It was bid with one particular drive unit that we're not familiar with. We are going to be accepting the add-on for the drive units that we currently use. It's a Browning drive unit. The other, I can't remember what the.
Dodge.
Dodge drive unit. We're not familiar with that particular unit. We now have Brownings on all of our, most of our pieces. We are experimenting with a, what's called a NORD, N-O-R-D. It's a new unit that is on the market. But we are accepting the upgrade for the Browning drives. I think it's a total additional cost of $6,700 on the 2-point-whatever-million. It's not entirely a lot. And we are now investigating with our engineers the idea that we put on what are called variable frequency drive units on each of those drives so that the startup of the drive is controlled and it would also provide us with monitoring in the facility, within the facility, so we could watch what the impact of the loading is as those units move and turn and start up. Or if you've got to fluff off solids, you can run them in reverse. And that's something that we didn't have 30 years ago available to us. So we are looking at that cost as well. We haven't made a decision on that. Staff are still thinking about it, but I think that they're looking at it as the kind of an upgrade that we really might want. And I think the estimate we had for that was somewhere in the $60,000 range.
That's correct. It's for RBC drives for every RBC, so 32 VFDs, one for each RBC.
One of the things that, I think it's sort of parallel, your question, is that what we're doing on the RBCs, a lot of in-house?
Yes.
And that's going to be, if not monitoring the dollars, although that's certainly a consideration, it's monitoring the activity. Are we able to support that as we anticipated?
Well, we've installed two to date. And it's basically crane costs and our labor. And our labor is not counted in the bond, which was one of the reasons we went at it this way. So we think we'll be able to handle that. As Jason has said, we've got the bid for the RBCs. Once we agree on all of the materials that we'll be buying, that's going to be a fixed cost. It's not going to change. And so then we go forward.
Any further discussion on the engineering agreement? Hearing on, all in favor, signify by aye. That's seven in favor and no objections or abstentions. Next one is for the loan application for the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. That was circulated as. That was circulated as well. It's interesting reading it, but do I have a motion?
Yes, some moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second, thanks Jim. Discussion on the application. Is there anything that we should be asking you about that the application doesn't say?
It's really, if you look at both the loan applications, a lot of the numbers are the same, but this is just a parallel project. So as we move through this project, you're going to constantly be required to think in terms of two separate projects on the same site being run parallel. And I congratulate Aldrich and Elliott for trying to take this out.
Yeah, and one will be finished before the other.
Yes, one will be finished in December of 2018.
And the way the bonds are set, we will not be obligated just to commence payment until
Two years after the completion of the project, is that right? So if, in fact, as Jason has said, the second portion of this, the upgrade itself, which we anticipate beginning construction in August, if that is delayed at all, it just pushes that bond payment out further, because the substantial completion will be issued on the entire project, but not the individual.
And just to clarify that a little bit, there are, so there are two separate loan applications, there's two separate projects. You're actually going to be issued two separate loan numbers. So you're going to have two different loans from the Clean Water SRF program. So if the RBC project finishes in December, your repayment starts, your repayment clock starts at that point in time.
Thank you, Jason.
Your wastewater plant starts in August of 2018, say it's done December 2019, that's when your repayment clock starts on that loan. So just to be clear.
That's helpful. So we don't get surprised.
It'll actually minimize the impact.
Yeah.
Because they'll come in probably a year apart.
Could you help me just read this a little bit, Stuart, or maybe Jason? I didn't have a chance to ask you about this earlier. I normally would have, and I apologize for that. But so the, and the loan request amount is 266,000. How do we reconcile that with the rest of the application? Where else do we see that number?
If you, if you look at, I'm sorry, this particular sheet
Yeah.
And the orange column, it's shown as 262.5.
Okay.
That's the part of the loan application we are now approving. There will be, there will be follow-up
That's correct.
Applications as these things become ready.
So the additional 3,500 shows up?
No, no. This, 262.5 was an estimate.
I see.
The actual amount is 266. Now we're down to, we know, we're down to the numbers. We've crunched the numbers. This is what the engineers are now saying, that that particular part of the project will cost.
Okay.
And it's a not to exceed figure.
I said the application is for 262, because that's the way the application was presented.
Are you referring to the loan application?
The loan amount is for 266.
Right.
So, but what I'm trying to do is to figure out what the difference between the 262.5 and the 266 is, which is only $3,500, but I feel like I should be able to see where that difference comes from.
So the, you're not going to see it in here? This is the loan application? This isn't the engineering services agreement? So as Stu said, the engineering services agreement is going to follow at a separate meeting. This is the first step. I didn't bring the, there's a draft engineering services agreement out. I think, Stu, you have that? Not sure if Wayne sent that down or not.
I don't think I have that yet.
Okay. That document will have the details of everything that's included in that 266, which will be presented and your authorization will be requested at a later meeting. At this point in time, that draft has been submitted to the state. And so we are waiting on state review and state comment. That's why we're not presenting both of them at the same time. We're only presenting the loan application right now. And so the loan application basically just sort of gets the ball rolling. It doesn't authorize us to do anything right now. It just allows this process to get started at the state, because there's some steps they need to go through to initiate the loan to be able to get you money.
I see. Can we change this on the fly? Excuse me for interrupting you, but can we change this on the fly if the loan engineering agreement comes back higher or lower? Can we adjust that 266?
So we can. So I will tell you that it won't come in higher. I know that for sure. If it came in lower, then the engineering agreement would dictate what that value is. What's going to happen as we move through this process, there's going to be an additional, there will be a subsequent loan application. You're going to see a lot of loan applications here. There will be another loan application for the treatment facility upgrade for, at the step three point. So when we're getting ready to put this project, or closer to put this project out to bid, there'll be another loan application, which will basically amend this or revise this loan application, and it will wrap in all of the other step three, sorry, engineering costs, any other engineering costs, all legal, all administrative, and the actual construction cost for the project.
And the other costs too? So we'll add the 455 and the 465 and all those?
That's correct. That's correct. So this is sort of a request for an amount from the state that's a not to exceed amount for design at this point in time.
Gets us started.
Gets you started.
All right, okay. I'm satisfied. Thank you.
So is there a reason why the process can't be reversed, so that we're seeing the engineering contract first, so we know? I mean, so we're guessing on the loan amount, waiting for the contract to come in?
We've prepared a draft engineering services agreement, and it's been sent to the state for their review. We were anticipating to have those review comments back by tonight, but the state hasn't responded. They said they were hopefully going to get to it today, but they haven't reviewed it. So the, we decided to bring the step two loan application to the board for review, again, to get that process rolling.
And so, and so if we didn't approve this tonight, it, I mean, it jams up the works? Is that, I mean, does it take a while to get this rolling? It just feels funny to be authorizing something before we know what we're paying for.
You're not necessarily, you're not authorizing us to do anything.
Actually, this is a loan application, which is subject to revisiting if circumstances change. Not, the Jamie Martin is sitting behind, is, a loan application is not the finished project. It's basically to get the application process going.
Right.
Well, and I hear you saying it's not going to come out higher. It might come out lower. We're going to wrap another half million or more into it later. So it's all going to come out when we do that, the second, third phases.
That's right. When I say it's not going to come out higher, the 266 that's being requested for engineering, final design engineering services, that number is not going to change for this loan application. When we get to applying for the step three, that's when the other costs get rolled in. So ultimately, the loan, the final loan will be higher. But what's being requested right now, and our engineering services for this particular phase, are not going to be higher. If the state comes back and they have some questions, just to be clear, we'll talk about this at the next meeting when we bring the, the engineering services agreement down. It includes our engineering services. We have subconsultants in there for electrical, mechanical, there's some geotechnical work. We have, we have lead and asbestos abatement work that's included in there. So there's multiple layers that are included in that engineering services agreement. And, you know, the state may or may not have comments about certain things, and that may adjust the number a little bit. But as I say, it's not going to be higher than this. That's not really the way we operate. So if anything, if they have comments and we need to drop it a little bit, for whatever reason they may have, I don't know what there would be, then we would address that at that point in time.
That's great. And Stuart, I'm sorry to pick on this, but what might help me and maybe other people that are trying to follow it is just to, maybe just a little sketch of when these requests or when these loan applications might be coming in, so that we can say when they do, we knew this was coming? We've been anticipating this?
I think, now that we're underway, and we actually have a bond vote approval? I think that working with all, we can put together a schedule of when you're likely to see those things.
That would be great. That would help me out a lot to know what stage we're at and kind of follow along with the boxes.
And remember, the 266, 266,000 is part of a $5.3 million project.
I know, I know. And I'm picking on $3,500 here, so.
So just, unless something dramatic happens and, you know, the town wants to start over and build a brand-new wastewater treatment facility on the site, there's probably not going to be another step two loan application. There will be a step three loan application, like I said, will roll everything else into it. There will probably be one more loan application, which you will not see, I'm going to say, until probably spring of next year. But we can work with Stu to make sure you're definitely aware. And as Stu mentioned earlier, this has all been, it's a confusing project. It's not a typical project by any means, given the two separate phases and how the town is doing some of the work as what the state's calling forced account work, and just managing the two separate loans to try to fit a square peg into a round hole, basically, for the typical process, has been a little bit different and challenging, so.
To be able to track the warrants as they come in, are they going to be embedded in what we get every month, or will we see kind of in a separate spreadsheet and accounting of the project?
No, the payments will be, will be on the regular warrant initially. Those payments will be to Aldrich and Elliott. And the bidder who won the RBC bid is a company called Evaku, which is E-V-O, or Aqua, A-Q-U-A. Those are what you're going to see. We can highlight them, we'll do something, so you be sure to note them. We have been paying Aldrich and Elliott some of the step one monies already, that was part of a $32,000 planning grant, which will ultimately also be wrapped up into this entire project. So we'll highlight those for you on the warrant, so you can see where we're going.
Great, thank you.
Other questions?
Do you need a motion to?
I think we've got it.
I think we did, yeah.
I think it's just all in favor of the application, signify by aye.
Aye.
And I would ask you to sign.
We're all in favor, I think. Thanks very much, Jason. I don't think we have anything more, do we?
No, I think we're done. Thank you so much for coming down, Jason.
We look forward to the next time you come down.
Great, thanks for your time.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Masonic Societies of Bennington request for consideration or tax exempt ballot status request. Tim Finney is going to be leading that discussion. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Nice.
Not in your rescue squad outfit.
Excuse me?
You're not in your rescue squad
No.
Uniform. Go ahead.
Not quite wearing my Masonic apron.
You're right.
I represent, of course, the Masonic Societies of Bennington and Mount Anthony Lodge Number 13. I am master of the lodge and chair of the trustees. Did you receive a copy of our request? Okay, then I won't read it. Short version of the tale is, we're financially hurting. We're behind on our regular taxes. We hope to have a town loan that was for safety purposes, that was made a number of years ago, should be paid off by January. Over the years, we have had the ability to share our facility with the state of Vermont and CATV, and those two agencies left us. And in order to meet our expenses, we did some commercial renting. And since the minute we did that, we became taxable. And so our taxes right now are very burdensome. And the more we try and be commercial, the further behind we get. So at this stage of the game, we're trying to go back to our roots. Masonry in Bennington goes back, well, let's start with the building. It was constructed in 1910, 1911, and masonry goes back many decades before that, here in Bennington. There's quite a history of masonry in Bennington. The battle monument, the cornerstone was laid by mason, and the capstone was laid by The building itself now is a historic building. Unfortunately, it's deteriorating, and we don't want it to become another middle school. So we're looking for help. What questions can I answer?
You said another middle school? Maybe I missed that. Oh, you're talking about, okay, you don't want it to become like the building on the
The old Ben High. We don't want it to become the old Ben Highs.
Yes, it is, yeah, exactly. Would you have any consideration to transferring the property to another non-exempt activity?
Now, let me turn up my hearing aids a little bit.
Okay. Do you have any discussions about maybe transferring or selling or doing something with the property?
There are a few efforts in the wings that we can't
Can't disclose, okay.
We can't cover with a hat. The VAE is trying to put together a consortium of a couple different agencies, but nothing has come together on that. They're just talking. Mr. Hurd has asked me the same question, and we are willing to accept that type of thing. There is a deed of gift that we have to deal with between Owen Scott and the Norton Barber family, that the building shall always be made use of by masons. We've talked about, okay, the basement is a usable space, the ballroom area is a usable space, the third floor is our Masonic Lodge. If we could keep the Masonic Lodge on the third floor, if there was an entity that wanted to come in and manage and take over the basement and the ballroom floor, we would not be adverse to that at all.
How many participants are there in their local mason?
We have about 60 dues-paying brothers right now, and probably 20, 25 active members. And we've got, a lot of our brothers are no longer in town. We call them snowbirds, but they continue to be interested in the lodge.
And your request tonight is to, for the select board to put you on the ballot as a tax-exempt entity for voting by the public?
Say again, please.
You're looking for the vote to be put on the ballot for this coming March?
Yes, please.
Okay. Stuart, before we really open up the discussion, how does this differ from other fraternal organizations in town? You know, the Elks, Eagles, Moose?
Well, frankly, there are no fraternal organizations that are currently tax-exempt, and that may go to the use of the building, where they're being rented out for income purposes, or otherwise used by, to generate income, to help the buildings function. But none of, no fraternal organizations are currently tax-exempt in Bennington. And, I mean, I don't know that anyone has ever asked. This is the first in my tenure as town manager.
What, do you know the taxes that are assessed for them on a yearly basis?
I don't.
Right now, well, it's hard to tell. Right next to us, joined with us and part of our property, is the, what we call the Norton Building, but it's occupied by Parrot Realty. Between the two buildings, we're taxed about $12,000 a year. I think the lodge itself is taxed at about $7,000. I'm not sure, I have not seen a document, but at one point, it was explained to me that the basement floor and the ballroom floor were considered commercial enterprises, and that they were taxed. But the lodge room floor But the lodge room floor, since it was strictly fraternal, was not taxed.
And you aren't?
I don't know whether that's true or not, I've never seen a document, but that's what was explained to me.
Does that make sense to you?
It's nothing that is, that it's clear from the grand list records. The building is simply placed on the grand list, and it's taxed. I think $12,000 for the total is what I recall.
And that's for two buildings?
Well, yeah, they're side by side, they're connected, side-by-side buildings, yeah.
But they are two separate tax bills.
Okay. And you are charging fees for the VAE to use your space?
There is a donation provided to offset expenses.
Okay. As well as for other uses, you are charging a fee?
Event by event.
And it's not covering the taxes?
Excuse me?
And it's not covering the taxes?
That's correct, and it's not covering the taxes.
But it's all by donation?
Yes.
It's not by fee? You did have Encademount TV and other sources of rental at some point?
Correct.
Years ago, though? And you haven't had any of that income for years, right? You haven't had that income for years, other than?
Other than the commercial rentals that we did have, that we no longer have.
Yeah, right. I guess the only question is that the other fraternal organizations are not on the tax rules for non-exempt purpose, you know, they're taxed.
That's correct.
Are they the same tax status? Is it a?
I'm gonna say yes. The statute specifically set aside and speak to how fraternal organizations can gain tax-exempt status, and it's by vote of the people. And it's not an annual vote, it's once voted, they remain tax-exempt until their status changes, which would, in the case of the masons, if you, once you start to rent out your basement office space again, then you lose that status. So I, historically, I can't say that they were tax-exempt in the past, it's not an issue that came to my attention, I can just tell you now that they are taxed, and as are all of the other fraternal organizations, the Eagles, the Elks, and the Moose.
So this is something that has to go before the voters in March?
It must be voted by the people. And the only question here tonight is whether you will require them to petition, or whether you will place them on the ballot voluntarily.
That gets to the rub. That's really it.
At this stage, at this stage of the game, just let me point out that many of the other fraternal organizations have an income stream, in terms of bingo program or a cash bar that's associated with their facility, and we have none of those.
That's interesting.
The only income stream we have is our brothers' dues and donations for events.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Thank you for being here tonight, and you have a big contingent of people, so if anyone can add other comments, I mean, please help your fellow brother up here if you want to. No one was standing for that one. You have a great facility, you guys do some amazing, or you have done some amazing events and programs, and those funds that are coming in via donations, I know you're not counting that as income, but do you have people within your brotherhood, if that's said correctly, that are looking for income streams? I mean, I think it, I don't wanna state it obvious, but if we step into the road of fraternal organizations in our community becoming non-exempt entities, I think you're gonna, I mean, if I was part of those other organizations, I might get in line pretty quickly to get on the same boat. I respect that they have income streams, whether it be bars or other things that you mentioned, if we have an organization that's giving income. Is anybody tasked with filling the great space that you currently have in our immediate downtown? I mean, you have some great square footage to be used for potential income streams, and I don't know if someone has been like a task force to help generate revenue out of there? I mean, I respect you don't have any right now, but maybe if we all, not including me in that, but if people within your brotherhood maybe reach out to a consultant or, I mean, it just seems like there's income potential.
We don't have an awful lot of expertise in that regard.
And I get that, but it's, and I shouldn't use the word but, but there's, you're putting us in a position to lower your costs versus maybe getting help to increase your revenue, which to me, you have a great amount of opportunity in the building that you have to create revenue. Let's use some of the VAE examples, I mean, you can put on a great event, you have the bricks and mortar, so why not focus on income versus, in this case, putting us in a tough spot potentially to decrease your costs?
You know, I think the underlying question is whether or not we want to establish a board, select board precedent by just putting them on the ballot without going through the actual process of seeking.
You'll get my answer on that one if we put it to vote. I mean, it's, I'm just trying to help.
Yeah, but they want, they want tax-exempt status. And the question is, do we set that as a precedent, anticipating, as you're saying, that other fraternal organizations can come and make the same pitch? Maybe not as strong, because they have income streams, and you're suggesting they should try to get one?
I just know the space. You guys have amazing space for different events, you're in the media downtown, you have a, there's so much opportunity you guys can capitalize on, and I'm not saying if you're an expert or not, maybe, I mean, we could take it offline, but there's, you could partner with somebody that is an expert in that industry. I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of potential energy there. I know that's not the topic at hand, but I just want to state it obvious.
And fundamentally, tonight, if we were as a board to go ahead and suggest tax approval, or tax?
Exemption?
Exemption.
And all we're doing is putting it on the?
It would have to go before the voters.
Yeah.
No matter who it was.
Yeah.
We're just deciding whether or not to put it on the ballot.
Can I just clarify one thing? You mentioned, you know, the other fraternal organizations. I don't think they would be able to get tax-exempt status because they have an income stream. Is that true?
That's true.
Okay.
It doesn't seem that it would be that challenging, though, to maybe look at this income coming from?
Oh, I totally agree with you. I was just clarifying, I don't think they would be eligible for, to even get tax-exempt status, but they are.
Well, yeah, they would. Anybody would.
Not if you have an income stream. They're running a business out of their facility.
I'm confused then.
Yeah.
There's a revenue stream, it determines tax exemption.
Yes, if they're using, if you are using your facility to generate income, then you can't be tax-exempt as a fraternal organization.
So they could, only if they shut down their bars or whatever they're using to generate revenue?
Yeah, I don't wanna really muddy it up, but they could have an income stream with like bingo, okay? Masons could have bingo and probably still get the essence of exemption status. But if you're having weddings and you're renting it out, duh-duh-duh, then you got into a different situation.
And I think your money, when people rent your space for an event, it's, like you said, it's a donation.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's classified as a donation.
Yes.
Right.
Just as a frame of reference, the Lodge Brotherhood, the Lodge of Masons without the building, comes under the ageus of the Grand Lodge of Vermont, which makes us a 501(c)(3).
Isn't it because there's a different statute for fraternal organizations that deal with this?
Yes, it's a statute that specifically deals with whether or not property can gain tax exemption. It has nothing to do whether or not they're a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(6). It's whether or not the property itself can be tax-exempt, and how they may achieve that. And as you know, the Rescue Squad has to be voted every five years by the voters in order to gain tax-exempt status for their facilities. In this particular case, I think it's a one vote. If they are successful, they become tax-exempt by approval of the voters.
So there's no public benefit test? There's no, there's no other tax status or other implications that have to be considered?
No, it's just, because they are fraternal organization, they have the opportunity to go before the voters for such status.
Go ahead.
If we don't put them on, how many signatures would they need on the petition?
About 469, 5% of the voters.
5%. And if they got that, then they're automatically on the ballot?
They're automatically on the ballot.
Okay.
But we as a board can make a decision?
Just to put them on?
That's the motion tonight?
Yes, you can.
I'll entertain a motion, at least for further discussion.
So?
Is your second?
Which?
To?
One more.
To be?
One more.
We have, just a second, we'll come back to you. Hold on, go ahead, do we have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to put on the ballot without petition.
Second.
Okay, discussion on that, and Tim, you wanna weigh in some more?
Just one comment, we are not asking for exemption on the 506 Parrot property, the Norton Building or Parrot Realty, but like, we are not asking for an exception on that.
Okay.
Just for, just for, just for the Lodge Temple as a?
Yeah, the motion is to put them on the ballot and let the people decide, rather than go through petition process.
We're not granting tax-exempt status, we're just putting it on the ballot.
We're waiving the petition process.
Yes, we're waiving the petition.
Well, what are we, where are you going?
I just get nervous, sometimes come election time, people just quit in that habit of sometimes checking that yes box and not necessarily knowing what all those yeses are, and I'm, including myself in that, maybe just exclusively myself.
No, you're not, I feel the same way.
If you wanna get more messaging out about your cause and what's happening in the building, the potential that lies within, you know, of that space and what you guys are bringing to this town, it might be worth the exercise of finding 5% of our current voters and informing them of not only what you're trying to do, but also the ability to bring more revenue out of your space. I guess if you're bringing in more revenue, you probably wouldn't fall under that tax-exempt status, but I think trying to save 12 or $12,000 annually, actually, it's $7,000, right? You guys pay?
Approximately.
$7,000, you might be better served to find, you know, $7,000 of income to offset that. Just food for thought.
Yeah, no, I think it's a very good point, and the point that I'm rested with is establishing a precedent of just putting it on the ballot without having the party that's seeking it go through a process, and we have the petition process. And that may be over and burdensome, but really, that's where I come off on it.
It bleeds a little bit into this next item that we're gonna be talking about, which is sort of, what do we expect agencies to do in order to get on the ballot? And it feels to me like we're setting a fairly high bar for agencies, and I guess, is it within our prerogative to set a lower bar, but nevertheless a bar, for the brotherhood agencies?
Well, what's the statute say, Stu?
I don't know what the bar, what you mean, like?
Instead of 5%?
No, no, I think the petition is.
The statutory requirement is 5% of the voters. You can't reduce it.
We can't muck with that.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I'd like to know a little bit more about what the masons do for the community, so assuming that there's a, assuming that there's a broad public benefit that benefits the community, and that's the reason why the taxpayers should be exempting you from tax status, it'd be great to hear more about what it is you're doing right now and what things you do benefit the broader community.
Currently, directly, one of the things we have is a coat drive for everyone who needs it. It's going on now. We also have an annual scholarship. We are also, as masons, we are a part, well, let me phrase it this way, in order to be a Shriner, you have to be a mason. In order to be a Knights Templar, you have to be a mason. In order to be a Scottish Rite person, you have to be a mason. The Shriners hospitals are all Masonically supported. The York Rite has an eye foundation. The Scottish Rite, Brother Tim?
Dyslexia.
Excuse me?
Dyslexia.
Supports dyslexia response. Brother James, the Blue Lodge support, on the Grand Lodge supports?
Care Program, Compliment Service, oh goodness.
Which is an evaluation in schools of children at risk, at risk, and for evaluation and how, and how to help them.
I think Alan might have a further?
I'll just step close to the mic so you can hear me. My name's Alan Watson, and the Care Program is the Comprehensive Assessment and Recovery Act. And the masons in the State of Vermont spend about $60,000 teaching teachers how to find kids at risk and get them to the proper facilities throughout there. We do about 100 to 105 teachers a year for three days in Rutland, and they go through this class that is nationally recognized to find, we have noted about 35 children saved by that, we've been doing it for about 20 years.
Thanks, Alan. Other?
Could I add just a couple more things?
Yep.
And I hope you're not interpreting my comments here, as far as, I'm not a supporter of this, because I think you guys are, the contributions you make are incredible, but the way you're describing the idea of you're only using the third floor of your building and you're looking for tax-exempt status, if you were just to look at the idea of, it sounds to me like you're looking for $7,000 annually just to offset the property tax bill? Is that kind of a goal here, the $7,000? If you would have more, again, I'm not trying to talk you out of anything, but, because this can go and, we can talk about it more, but if, just, you're thinking $7,000 for downtown rental space? If you break that down monthly, I mean, it's, you would offer a very inexpensive lease for somebody monthly to cover the space. I mean, it's, it just seems as though you're taking a road that isn't maybe the best route. Maybe I'm not understanding it correctly, but if you have the real estate company next to you taking one building, and you're looking for $7,000, please, tell me where I'm not getting this.
It's not just the $7,000.
Okay, so there's other costs that are bearing you guys, too?
The use by VAE, they donate $200 of what they take in for a function, that doesn't even cover our expenses. We're actually, our expenses for care, maintenance, and upkeep of the building?
Yeah.
Well exceed that $200 a night. We had wrestling in there a couple of weeks ago. It cost, they donated $250 for the night. Our expenses exceeded that, just our custodial costs for that night were $140 for that one night. So there's a lot of expenses to that building. The building is in fair, at best condition, probably could have $100,000 of repairs thrown at it, and it might make a very small start. The whole project here is to make that a community center building. We're trying to make that a building that can be used in the center of town for anybody that wants to use it on a small donation basis, and try to bring more people to the downtown, both day and night. We've been doing a coat drive now, this is, I think, year three or four. We've let the police department in the past use it for training in the main level, and there's a lot of things, but the problem is, is our membership is aging. I think our average age is like 67 years. I can remember joining that, when there was 300 members there, we're down to like 62, 3, 4 now, and the membership keeps declining and the bills keep going up. Our insurance costs now for that building exceed $12,000 a year.
So, again, the goal here tonight is to just change the tax exempt? It just seems like we're pulling more and more out here.
Basically, I think this is all well and good, but it's really process over the quality, because you've made an argument, if I were at the polls, there would be a check next to, by all means. It's a question of how you- It's a question of how you get on the ballot, and that's really the discussion tonight, that's it.
Yeah, I didn't mean to take it off the rails, I just...
Yeah, no, you're not. It's, but, but you've demonstrated the quality of the services that are being provided to the community, but it's a question, do we as a board want to just put you on the ballot or put you to the process of any other tax exempt organization to get on the ballot through the petition process? And it sounds like it's onerous, because 5%, when you have an aging Brotherhood, to try to get that 5%, but I can't, you know, I don't want to speak for the other members, but I think we have a process for a reason, and that's why we have that.
Yeah, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about breaking the process. I think if it were possible to reduce the number of signatures, I would be happy to consider that, but it sounds like that's not within our...
Purview, yes.
Our purview.
It's state law.
So state law. I am concerned about waiving that, because then it feels like we're setting a precedent that I think I'm not comfortable with.
I'm with you, I could change my mind in time. So I guess, you know, I would be open to, I don't know when we have to make this decision, but if we could get a little bit more clear, perhaps if you worked with Zirwa from the town and worked on a very specific proposal that made this space available to community groups for a certain price, for a certain period of time, so there was really a strong proposal in place, and we could say it's borderline community space at this point. I would feel a little bit like I might bend the rules for that. But what I hear right now is a little bit more vague than that, and it feels a little harder to break with process. Would it be possible to ask for a little bit more, a more specific proposal on this?
We have a motion on the ballot.
We have a motion right now.
Call the vote.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Let me just, let me just say that any agency, town, town agency at all, from the Chamber of Commerce to Sturrock, to the Water Department, I don't, I don't care. I don't think the Lodge cares. Anybody that wants to come in and make use of that facility, we are inviting them. We want the doors of the Lodge open, so that the people can see the building and use the building and have it be a resource.
Yeah, but you know, I think...
What sort of contact we need to reach out with, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But that's our goal.
Okay, I think the vote's going to be called, because we're getting into the substance of why you should get the exemption status, not why the process should be dealt with. So we have a motion for placing the Masonic Societies of Bennington on the upcoming ballot without the process of petition. Signify all in favor of the motion as presented. Two in favor, anyhow, are those opposed to the motion? That is five opposed. So we wish you success in the petition process. You've made a very persuasive argument, that I think the community will be welcoming, and then we will go from there.
Tom, I'd just like to make one...
Sure, please.
Point that, you know, the YMCA was looking for extra space here tonight. I think that's an open door for you.
That's a great point.
They're welcome.
Yeah.
How do, what's the best contact, or who's the best contact?
Yeah, I have a lot of, I have a lot of ideas.
Right now...
These folks have a lot of ideas down here, because they get paid for it.
That's our business.
Right now, the most consistent contacts is myself.
His email's on our letter.
My contact information.
It's on the letter.
This one, right?
Yeah, it's right there.
On the sheet?
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks, Tim.
We are thankful for everything you do.
We are going to segue into a discussion on the policy amendment for agency funding requests, Stu. Could you bring us up to speed on it, so we can have a dialogue?
At the last meeting, you asked if I would take a look again at the policy regarding petitioning and placement on the ballot by agencies seeking funding from the town. And in the past, it was, the Level 1 funding agencies we'll refer to...
Oh, sure.
I know you guys are all headed out, I hope that's not viewed, you know, in the sense of, you know, complete disappointment, because it's something where I think you guys opened a good door for us. A lot of people here with a no vote, they leave, frown, but I wouldn't view that at all that way. Thanks for coming in front of us all.
The fact that you heard us means a lot to the petition.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, our next, our next item, by the way, guys, I appreciate the comments.
In the past, I mean, this original policy was adopted in 2012. Level 1 funding agencies are those agencies that are requesting $7,500 or more from the town. All of those agencies must petition every year to be included on the ballot. Because they are petitioning, we do not request any additional information from them. At one point, they were supplying it, but it's not necessary since the signatures, the necessary signatures get them on the ballot anyway. The Level 2 funding agencies are those agencies that request $7,500 or less. They currently have an application process, which will be beginning very soon. I believe those applications are going out or may be out very soon. It requires that the agency, in order to be placed on the ballot, supply us with very specific information, and it's previous tax returns, budgets, and revenue, other revenue sources, the number of people that they serve in Bennington. There's a whole host of information that that application requires, and I can, I was going through my files today. I have files this thick from the last two years, agency submittals, those agencies that were placed on the ballot because they were successful in the preceding year, and they are requesting $7,500 or less. We let you know that that information is available, but I think it would not be good use of trees to copy all of that information and distribute it to every member of the board. But it's available to you, and you can request it on specific agencies at any time. And generally, we meet with the two library organizations on an annual basis, but they are included within the budget. In the past, there have been some times when the board meets with agencies that are requesting less funding than $7,500, but once this policy was in place, that really kind of ceased. And so the question came this year, we were in the third year process, which would require every agency to petition, except one that was new to the ballot last year. And the concern was raised, both in the town clerk's office and with some of the, some others who were petitioning, that why do we need to do this? Because we've been successful every year and have been for a number of years, wouldn't it be just easier, we'll continue to make the application, we'll continue to supply the information and use simply places on the ballot? So that's what the revised policy says, that there'll be no petition requirement for those agencies considered Level 2 funding agencies. And that does not include, for clarification purposes, the Bennington County Regional Commission, which, to which we belong and essentially pay dues, the Bennington Free Library, the John C. G. McCullough Library, Lake Perrin Recreation and the Village of North Bennington. They are all placed in the ballot, not on the ballot, or in the budget, not on the ballot, on an annual basis, given an application to the town, so...
You mean Level 1, right? Are you confusing Level 1 and 2?
Yeah, I think you are.
I think you're reversing them.
Right, because I was saying that.
Level 1 is $75,000 or less.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because I think we're all saying the same thing here, and you can go.
I was just trying to trick you, you know.
No, no.
See if I can get you, I'm sorry.
You do.
You're absolutely correct.
I know, that's why, yeah, we're all confused.
But once they've gone through the process of getting 5% of the signatures, it won't be necessary for them to do it on a yearly or triannually basis.
If this policy is adopted, they would not be required to petition this year.
I didn't realize that there was information available that I could look at. So that's news to me.
I'm sorry about that. I mean, because it, we do gather at the petition, the application actually tells you what is required to be submitted.
The other part about this petition process, it seems to me, if they can all, one agency can load on the back of another just to get on the ballot, what's the purpose of the petition process? If it were individual petitions by entities, and they had to go out and get signatures and demonstrate some minimal reason for going on the ballot, I would say, believe it as it is. But if the Secretary of State or someone said they can have multi-petitioners to get on, what's the purpose of this petition, except to cause Cassie a lot of time trying to figure out where they...
And that is, it is unfortunate, but that's, that is a ruling that the current Secretary of State's office has made. I mean, as it is, the Level 2 funding agencies all piggyback.
Yeah.
They all come in on one petition.
So can I ask, what, I'm not sure what the value to the voter is to have information going to you, but then the voter doesn't get to learn about these organizations. I would really be much more interested in having the information that's coming, whether it's Level 1 or Level 2 funding, that's coming to you, be actually be presented in some kind of public way, so that the people that are actually voting on these organizations know what good work is being done by these organizations and why they need, why they're requesting that the taxpayers help support their organizations.
Wouldn't that be responsibility of the agencies?
No, I think it's our responsibility, because we've set it up so that it goes to you rather than out to the public, right? I mean, so that's just, that seems like it's a simple thing to change.
Just say, at the annual meeting, they have to be present and make their pitch?
One thing, knowing the financials of the places at work, for instance, the rescue squad that we're doling out $200,000 a year for.
They're in a different scenario.
Well, I think we ought to know the financials.
Oh, yeah, we are.
And where that money is going, how it's being spent.
But that's, that's a separate...
You had that presented last time before it went on the ballot.
The corollary of what you're talking about, Jeannie, is that with no signature requirement ever, if an organization starts to do poorly, and let's hope that doesn't happen with any of our organizations, but there's not a great reevaluation opportunity for the public, right?
Right.
So, I mean, the idea of some interval of signatures being required is that you have to win not only hearts and minds, but you also have to do a good job. And if an organization is starting to not do a good job, then it would be presumably more, there'd be some resistance to signing the bulk signature block.
Probably not much.
Probably not much, though, you're right, because the other ones are good.
They're going to carry the weight just to get there.
Yeah.
It's more important to present in a public setting, for them to update us financially and how they're doing. And again, the goal would be to help people come Election Day to...
Make a reasonable choice.
Yeah, take the time and have the ability to easily get that information in advance. Because if we're not providing it in a setting where they can view it on Facebook or view it on Cat TV or come to one of these meetings, shame on us.
Yeah, I think that, I think this is pretty important, because I think we can't, we're asking, we're, you know, we're saying people are just checking, but if we're not providing, helping them see information to make intelligent decisions, then they are just guessing.
How many, how many agencies are we talking about?
13.
13.
And that's, that's including below $7,500 and above?
That's the total, I think it's 13 or 14 around the ballot every year.
I mean, is there any, why are we making distinction? Why wouldn't we ask all organizations to do petitioning?
I think for just the same reason I just said.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the other side of this. If every organization, every year, had to petition, then frankly, they're not required to submit anything to you.
I'm not interested in having them petition every year. I think I want information every year, but I do think there needs to be something that happens every three years or some regular period of time, so that, I mean, any organization can have a bad year, you know, but if you've got a, if you've got a string of non-performance years, then I do want a way that, that it's not just an automatic.
Maybe it's our, going back to our responsibility as a board to educate the public, to make sure those 13 agencies during the course of each year, or one, two, or three years, come before us and make their pitch to the community. How they get on the ballot, I think it's sort of, it's, what's the big deal? But it's a question of, so that someone comes to vote, they got a reason to vote for or against.
And all 13, for the most part, need more money, so here's an opportunity for them to really put their hat on again, talk about their successes, and then look for more.
So Stuart, here we blather on about this, you've heard this for decades, right?
Since 2012.
I know that, I know that there's nobody probably in this room that more carefully watches the annual budgets and the tax rates than you, and you're always wanting to keep the tax rate down for the citizen, I know that about you. And you must be very frustrated by, by sort of runaway agency spending. So what would you, not that it's runaway, but that it could run away. What would you recommend in this situation? What's the, where do we find downward pressure? Where can we apply pressure that would give our citizenry a better opportunity to vote and not overtax our citizens?
The unfortunate or fortunate part, depending on which side of the ballot you're looking at, is that state law provides that agencies may petition to be placed on the ballot for funding purposes, and they have to be social services agencies. Therefore, under the law, there is absolutely nothing we can do to stop an agency considered a social service agency from petitioning to be on the ballot for any amount. The purpose of this policy initially was to reduce the effort for those agencies that weren't asking for a lot of money, so that only every three years need they petition or go through the petition process. It's only of late that the Secretary of State's offices has said, well, you can all get onto the one petition. So instead of seven or eight agencies out there, as Tom has said, individually petitioning, trying to get 500 signatures for their agency, now you can lump all of the agencies on the same ballot, as long as you differentiate between the agency and what they're asking for, and you only need to circulate one petition. So each agency can get 50 signatures, and they're essentially on the ballot. So they've made the effort a lot easier. Would that then say to us that we ought to make them petition every year? And the risk there is that they begin to ask for greater and greater amounts of money. This process was, was essentially to try to cap those people who were not asking for a lot of effort, a lot of money, and therefore rewarded with a little less effort to get on the ballot, other than supplying us with the information. And I'd be happy to make that information available to you all, it's, it's, there's a lot of it. And we've technically, I think we've told you that it's there, because the agency application requires they submit it. They can't get before, on the ballot unless they submit it. So we will not place them on the ballot or recommend that you place them on the ballot if we don't have all the information we asked for. And that information has become more and more burdensome. It's not only just the budget, the current budget against last year's budget. We look for tax returns, we look for audits or balance sheets, because a lot of the agencies don't do a full formal audit, but they do provide a balance sheet at the end of the year. All of that information comes to us, and we'll certainly get it out to you. I would say I don't think it's staff's responsibility to argue the benefits of a particular agency against another. If you folks wish to do that, to educate the voter, I think that's, that's fine. But I think really that responsibility falls to the agencies.
Yeah, I think, I think it's overstate it, I don't think we have that responsibility, the agency does. But it's to provide the forum for that to happen. And we know that the budget season's onerous enough for management, for the board as well. So, you know, to have the 13 agencies come, you know, in and try to make their pitch to the public through us during that time, I don't know if that has much...
So can I just press for my, his final recommendation? So this is your final recommendation then, in terms of, thank you for the history, and it really is helpful to hear it, but it's, but we don't have a lot of... it really is helpful to hear it, but it's, but we're, we don't have a lot of choices, it sounds like. There are not a lot of levers to pull or buttons to push.
Yeah, I mean, I think the policy that was originally adopted actually works well, and it has worked in, over the past several years. What threw us into kind of a curveball this year is that we had one new agency come onto the ballot last year, so technically they're, they're kind of in a different timeframe now, and we'll have to track that, which is why we're, we're sitting here saying, look, if you're not going to ask for $7,500, more than $7,500, you submit the right information, you give us all the information we asked for, the select board will place you on the ballot without forcing you to petition. If you want more than that, then you need to petition. And that's what this does. It eliminates that three-year boat cycle, a three-year petition cycle that now no longer covers all agencies for a time it did. But every time there'll be a new agency added, that means a whole new clock running for an individual agency that the staff has to track and make sure that we get them on the, to petition on the right year. It just, it's, it's going to add to the confusion, I think. If we, if we don't change the policy, I think it's going to add to more confusion because there'll be other agencies coming forward that want to be placed on the ballot. I don't have any doubt about this. As federal dollars begin to tighten even more under the current administration, all under the guise of a tax cut, we won't get into that politics.
Do you need a motion to accept this?
That would be great.
Go ahead.
Try to get a little...
Yep, that's fine. Go ahead. Sure.
Motion to accept the policy as written here? Or select board policy on agency funding effective immediately and until amended or terminated by the board?
Second?
Second.
Other discussion, Stuart, why we shouldn't enact this policy? It seems to be based upon what you said in a good way.
For my purposes, I think it's, it's, it's the way to get at least some of the information for those agencies that are asking for funding to the board and perhaps through that process out into the, into the community. And perhaps we can, we can pare down the amount of information we provide you instead of sending you the entire package. We get you the pertinent parts, the, the application, the last year's budget, the comparison to this year's budget, the number of people they serve, those kinds of things. And then if you, if it generates questions in your mind and you want to have those agencies come in either during the work sessions or at some other time during the year to address the board about their services and their, their impacts, that would be your call.
What about the annual, the town meeting?
I was just going to say that, yeah.
Well, you, that would, that's...
Make that as part of this, somewhere, filtering that in.
Maybe what we do, and, you know, you don't have to talk a little bit about this, but maybe we just let it be known that we're going to do a roll call at annual, at our town, annual town meeting. We're going to start the top agency, and we're going to go down and give everybody five minutes to give us an update on your organization and what's going on.
We have had it over the last two years, where there have been several agencies that have come.
But if it's a roll call, then maybe everybody would show up. But it might take a lot of time, but...
And they should know the kind of information we're looking for in that five minutes.
Yep.
So they could bam, bam, bam.
But the change that, so, but the change that this is doing is changing how often organizations need to petition, yes? There's no other real change in here. This isn't, this isn't increasing information flow. So I have a problem with this. So one, I'm not sure that I feel like, I mean, if we think $75,000 is so little, we need to...
Seventy-five hundred.
Seven, huh?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred?
You said seventy-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, seventy-five hundred, yeah, I guess so. Okay, seventy-five hundred is such a small amount of money that...
Why?
You don't need to be on the petition, you don't need to petition. I'm, I'm a little surprised at that. And I think having organizations that are larger need to do a petition every year is just onerous, because we just spent 20 minutes talking about the fact that getting signatures on a petition means nothing. So if it means nothing, then let's just make a grid. And if an organization doesn't get their petition done in the third year, in many ways, it's on them. So if, if I'm an organization and I forget to do my petition in the third year, then I'm not on the ballot. It's, it's not for the town to have to tell the, the agency. It should be the agency saying, I need to do a petition. So, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, I think we should try and track it, but in the end, it's the organization that wants to be on the ballot that has to remember to do the petition. But the petition is not the thing. The thing is really getting information out there, and I don't see anything in here that helps the public know why, what organizations are doing and why they want town funding.
The application, the application actually does provide that information, Jeanne, and I'll, I'll get you the information from last year that goes along with the application, and you can see.
And how would, how would the public get that information?
Well, that, you can either require that the agency somehow present that information at, at a public meeting, and I don't know whether you'd want to hold a special forum to let the agencies do that, or whether, as Tom and Donald are suggesting, you make them come forward at the annual town meeting and make a presentation on what they do and, and why they need the money. I can tell you, the, the amount of dollars that many of these agencies budget and spend is fairly fantastic, a million to $2 million a year, and they're asking for $3,000 from us. It's really a token, but in most cases, they will tell you that they want to be able to show on their application for federal and state funding, some community support, and that's why they ask.
Okay. I just, I just, I think if we're going to do this, I would just like it to reflect what we really want, and it feels to me like we've just made it onerous on the petitioning side, but we haven't actually increased the public's ability to know what these organizations do. So I would like there to be something that says that there's an expectation that they will present at the town meeting, and also, I think to your point, Jean, you know, some, something that says, here are the things that we will make public on the website for any organization that is going to request funding, so that there is a place where the public can go and read about this.
I think that's the simplest way to go about it, absolutely.
I mean, and I don't, they don't need to put up, I mean, I don't want to see their entire budget necessarily up there, but just something so that, so that we know why they're on the ballot. I don't know. So that, that's my concern with this, is it doesn't seem to address...
Can we not be specific what we want, but just say we do want some information provided through the town website or something within the context of this? You know?
Well, I think what I'd like to do, even if, even if you table the action tonight and we bring it back to you, we're still talking about petitions due January 20th or something, so there, there's still time. Is it still time, brother? So what I'd like to do is maybe get you a sample of the application and what that information is so you can better understand what's being submitted, and we have that information from last year, and then we can take this up at the next time if you want to make a motion to table it until next week or next two weeks.
Can we table it?
Do you want a few of us to maybe meet outside of a board meeting to come up with...
That's a great idea.
A little bit of more of a plan?
Yeah.
Not a quorum?
Do I have three volunteers?
Not enough of us, it's a quorum. I'm happy to do it.
If we can do it over email, I'm happy to do it.
What?
Can we do it over email?
Yeah, we can do it over email.
Yeah.
But, but that would be great if we could actually see the application, because I think we can probably look at the application and look at pertinent information.
Then we could adopt the policy tonight and simply do an addendum as to what...
Let's, let's talk, why don't we bring it in after, we still have time after the 20, what, 24?
We'll be beginning to get on the 27th.
27th, let's do it there, then we can put it all together.
So we'll do our part for the rest of the 27th.
Is that all right, if we just table it?
That would be great. I'd love to see that a little bit more. I mean, I do feel like we're all pulling in the same direction, and yet there's not much we can do about it.
This is just busy work, and, and I understand it, but I'm, I've been interested for a long time in making them...
Yeah, we just told the Masons to go out and get their 5%.
Exactly.
And that's burdensome to a 60-plus membered organization, and then all of a sudden, we're saying, well, maybe, we've got to be consistent, and that's what we've got to come back with.
Thank you.
So my motion, can you accept it?
No.
It's the first one I've ever put out.
How's it feel?
But, no.
Shut me down.
We have to, we have to vote on the motion to table...
I'm not going to bat on any of these motions.
He's done.
Carson, it's better than a no vote.
Motion to table.
All right.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Yeah.
Oh, that was quick and easy.
Actually, I don't think there's even a vote required, but anyway. So, good, thanks. Let's go to the...
You need to turn.
We're going to Town Plan Energy.
Dan, well, this is, this is very, should be very quick for you all.
Very, very quick.
Preface to upcoming action.
All we're asking for this evening is for you to acknowledge receipt of the proposed amendment to the Town Plan Energy section and set two meeting dates that we can warrant to have public hearings regarding this plan. We're not looking for any substantive review or anything this evening. I did put in the memo that I sent to you, the two suggested meetings that you might want to direct us to warn the hearings for. Those are the first two available, regular meetings, based on the statutory requirements of no less than 30 and no more than 120 days shall the first public hearing be held regarding the submittal to you. So we're suggesting January 8th, 2018, and January 22nd, 2018, unless you felt that you would want to have a special meeting or meetings, but given I understand the budget sessions and the holidays, that might be a big ask. But the Planning Commission and the Setting, Solar Setting Committee are anxious to proceed, so we would hope that you would accept, acknowledge receipt of the plan amendment and set, set two hearing dates.
Do you need an acknowledge motion or just an acceptance?
A motion to acknowledge receipt and schedule two public hearings for those dates.
I'd make that motion.
How about motion to accept? Stand down.
Sorry. Does anybody want to discuss that or do you want to table it?
Yeah, nobody even said that. Can I, can I just ask? I'm totally in favor of this, but, so the 8th and 22nd are not our regular, they're the off, they're the off Monday?
They're the regular.
They're the regular Monday?
Yeah, yeah.
If I did my calendar right and I looked at 2018...
Oh, right, January 1st is a Monday or something, okay.
I think any discussion on the, the motion? Hearing none, none, that's, we are none. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Accept the receipt of the proposed Town Plan. Let me just say, it was a really outstanding work product, and it's kind of interesting to read, and...
We struggled, right, Jim?
Yeah.
We did, we were.
Yeah.
Well over a year, wasn't it?
Lot of good work on the committee's part and a lot of good work on the regional commission staff.
Right, yeah.
And the planning commission.
And the planning commission.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to bring us up to date on?
Any upcoming meetings or anything?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask him about. Any upcoming meetings that we have to be aware of? I guess that was the...
That is good. So one of the things that we did request last meeting was that the select board agreed to have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission regarding two solar projects that you've all seen before. The Battle Creek project, which is behind the Carbone dealership, and the Chelsea solar project, which, as you know, was the subject of a Supreme Court case, they have, that has been dismissed at the applicant's request, and they are now restarting the process through the Public Utilities Commission. Neither one of these projects have changed in any significant way since they've been before both the Planning Commission and the Select Board at least twice. So we are, we are requesting, staff is requesting, and the Planning Commission has agreed that we help hold a public hearing to look at both of those projects on November 20 at 6:00 PM here in the firehouse, so that we can get, gather all the public comments, and then you folks can either make a determination that evening or at a later meeting.
Go ahead. I'm going to be recusing myself because of the...
Who's, so you're going to be the moderator again?
Yep, he is.
Do we want to find like a third party that can kind of, I was, put you in an awkward spot last time.
Well, not, not...
It's a nice word choice, too, because...
I think this is already scheduled.
It is scheduled, but it hasn't been, we haven't put out an agenda. The problem is if we want to get in our comments within the 45-day notice period for the new Chelsea, we should, you guys will have to make comments, you should be, make preliminary comments on the 20th, because at your next select board meeting will actually be the 45th day from those.
So can I, so I'm, I'm going to be away.
Yep, I'm recused.
Is there everyone, so are the other five people, so we...
I'm going to be here.
Okay, so we're down to four people.
Thanks.
You're recused.
That's down to four.
There's down to four.
That's right, yeah.
And that's...
So at least part of the value here is that, is that the public has a chance to address both the Select Board and the Planning Commission at the same time, right?
Right, so it saves those folks who want to comment on this project from coming to at least two more meetings.
Yeah.
It gets, it gets all that information out in one meeting so that the public comments are, are, are out, are made, and you guys are aware of them, and then you can take your actions. Again, these are not new projects. All of these projects have been discussed, I would dare say ad nauseam, there's nothing new about these. So it's really about folks who may not have had a chance to comment before, or that sort of thing. These are not, these have not been changed at all.
Except that we can expect many of the same people to come out and, and make some of the relatively lengthy arguments that were made before, so it would be a long...
And will both sides of the argument be heard?
Yes, I understand that the representative of the developer will be here to, to make the presentation, if, if, if the boards...
Well, if it's public comment, I mean, I mean, I forgot his first name. Brad.
Brad Wilson.
I mean, he's, he's going to give the similar conversation that we've had the last few times.
Yes. That's why we, that's why we thought it would make sense to have a joint meeting, have all the comments all at once, rather than draw it out. These are not, like I mentioned, these are not new projects. We want to give folks one last chance to, to, to express their opinions, and then you folks could act.
Well, and if we don't, if we don't act, we, the clock runs out on us, right?
Well, yes and no, I mean, there are two different stages. So the Chelsea solar project is during the 45-day notice period stage. If you don't make comments within a 45-day notice period, it doesn't mean you can't at the Public Utilities Commission. You really should make at least big picture comments during the 45-day notice period. It's best practice. The other project, the Battle Creek project, is actually been submitted and then filed for a Section 248 determination at the Public Utilities Commission. So we would be determining whether or not we were going to oppose that, or approve that, or take a pass on that project. We have already intervened so that we have our, our status available, but it'll be up to the Select Board to decide whether or not you want to support it, take no action, or, or oppose it.
So Dan, since only, since four of us will be able to be there, is, is there another, is there, is there another date when we could have six of us? Because, Tom, you're not going to be there regardless, or does it matter?
I think if you made your comments on the 27th, that would, I mean, technically you'd be one day late if we submitted it on the 28th, but I'm sure the Public Utilities Commission will not, will still take a notice of, especially the 45-day notice, the 45-day comments. For the public utility, for the Battle Creek, you're within the Public Utilities Commission process, they haven't had their hearing yet, so you'll, you'll have time. But both of those could happen, your final determination could be done on the 27th.
And we'll likely hear new voices for that. New voices should come out for that. I mean, it's...
Excuse me?
I would guess, we've heard a lot from our Apple Hill, Chelsea, that the individuals up there, but we haven't heard a tremendous amount of comments relating to Battle Creek.
Well, it has been before this board before, and there were significant, if you remember the Public House folks, that's...
Yeah, so sorry, I apologize.
You weren't even on the board then.
I wasn't on the board, yes, so I stand down with those comments, because they'd be new comments to me, I guess, so I apologize.
No, I assumed that you were here, so...
No, that's my fault, so I'll take that back.
I'm sorry that only four of us are going to be here, but we would have the whole Planning Commission here, and I would like to get our comments in. You know, we went through a lot of work to kind of come up with what we think solar should look like in Bennington, and, and I think we should at least go on record as, as saying whether or not we think the proposal is consistent with what we, what we feel is, is right for the town or not, and I'd like to do it in the, within the timeframe of, I'd like to not have it get disqualified because it was a day late. So I think most of the activity will be people talking to us, and I think you could catch talking to us, and I think you could catch it on Cat TV if Mike Cutler's available on the 20th. Yay, Mike. And it seems to me that we should, we should just forge ahead with the date and let people speak their piece and take an action of some sort before the, before the 45-day period runs out.
Dan, because the new amendment will not have been in effect at that point in time.
No, that amendment will not. I mean, obviously, you can take notice of it, and there's issues that you may want to ask questions about, but that amendment is not in place to control Battle Creek at the very least, although Battle Creek is on a preferred site, so that may be a fairly easy one to determine. The Chelsea Solar, I do not know, because it's only the 45-day notice, I don't, I think as long as, I don't think, until they file it, I think there's still a chance for the amendment to be adopted. However, they will file it probably almost immediately after the 45-day notice, so there's virtually no chance that that will be adopted to do, to affect directly the Chelsea.
Even if we did emergency meetings and things like that on this, we couldn't get ahead of that.
Because you can't even hold that for 30 minutes.
Yeah, because of timelines, okay. Just wanted to be clear that, so we cannot, we cannot get this ahead of that.
Well, it depends on how long they take to file. And again, when that clock starts ticking, I believe it's when the Public Utilities Commission accepts the application, not the 45-day notice that locks in the regulatory framework. But again, I don't want to say that for sure.
Tom, or, I don't know who's chairing at this point. Is this a meeting that Rob Wilmington will be at, should be at?
I don't know why Rob would need to be there.
Okay. I didn't know if someone was going to ask a question that we weren't capable of answering.
I'm sure they'll ask plenty of questions that we may not know the answer to, but it's really about the select board and the planning commission making a determination about whether or not they think these projects should be opposed, supported, or just frankly not commented upon at all.
Okay.
So if you can't be here at the meeting, watch it on TV and come, come ready to vote the next...
You can phone in.
We could Skype you in.
Just a little, I think it's pretty straightforward, which ones, which one complies and which one doesn't, and I think that's going to come out.
Yes.
All right.
You can't take judicial notice of whatever has come back before the board, huh?
Yes. Excuse me? November 20th.
Next Monday.
Next Monday.
No, no, not Monday, is it?
Yes, it is.
Next Monday.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM.
Don't burn your chicken, or turkey.
Burn it.
Is there any other business before the town manager's report comes out? I know you have an action item here.
We do have an action item on the manager's report. It's very quick. We have received a request from Chester Knoll, which is the upper half of the Jennings Brook-Chestern Knoll subdivision condominium project. We have already accepted the water and sewer infrastructure for Jennings Brook, and Chester Knoll is now asking if we would accept their water and sewer infrastructure. Their roads do not comply. They can't provide a 50-foot right-of-way. Many of the homes are closer to the road than they would normally need to be, but they've been working with Terry Morris over the last couple of years to get their infrastructure up to our compliance standards. They have done that. They have provided the necessary ASBILs, and it would just take an action by this board to accept that infrastructure for municipal, we would essentially be a municipal takeover. They're already paying water and sewer fees and all of that. They're just required to maintain it at their own expense, and they are also, as a public water system, required to do certain reporting that can be quite onerous over time.
Do you need to have a, any special meeting, or can we make a motion to?
I was, I was, well, I was saying, it should be an agenda item, so that I would be, plan to bring it to you by, on the November 27th.
Great, because I would think that's probably what. But is that going to fly in the face of any other requests that we've received from communities?
But Duffy Lane.
We already maintain the water and sewer infrastructure in that subdivision.
It's the same thing.
It's the roads that they're, we do not...
So it would be consistent with...
These folks understands their roads do not comply, and they would never comply.
Okay. That's important to get out, though, because otherwise, some of the folks, it might feel that we are preferential. Anything else, Stu?
That's it for me.
Thank you, Stu. Any other business you coming for?
I have nothing.
No.
Amazing.
No, not really. Jim?
I just want to express thanks to Mark White for his 38 years of service to the town. Mark retired this month.
As long as we're doing Mark's, I think, I can't speak directly for the farmer's market, but Mark Sawyer has been just an incredible asset to the farmer's market this summer. He's been helpful in every single way and really has been there for us in times of need, so please pass our thanks on to him.
I will. At least that tells me where he's been most of his...
Yeah. No, it's not because we give him free Danish or anything like that. And then I guess it's just the other thing, everybody probably already knows this, but if you're a deer hunter, good luck, and if you're not a deer hunter, wear lots of blaze orange for the next couple of weeks when you're walking in the woods.
No.
Congratulations for the wins this year. You've done a great job.
Yeah.
Nancy, anything else you want to add?
Scott, it stands by that.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
So...
We stand adjourned. Just making that assumption. Thank you.